November 12th, regular meeting of the school board to order. We have everybody present this evening, so we have a quorum. You can have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Blaine to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Second by Mr. Blaine. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero to adopt the agenda. Brings us to closed meeting items. Be it resolved that the board conduct a closed meeting for the following purposes: consideration of candidates for employment, assignment, promotion, demotion, and discipline of employees or resignation of employees who have a contractual commitment to the board as permitted by 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia, in consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel as permitted by Section 2.2-3711A8 of the Code of Virginia. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Shelley. Second by Dr. Meyer. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. We are now in closed session. To open session.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Motion by Dr. Meyer. Second by Mr. Braswell. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. We are now in open session. Certification of closed meeting. Whereas the Spotsylvania County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such a closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting. Do we have a motion to certify?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Blaine. Second by Ms. Shelley to certify the closed meeting. Roll call votes starting with Ms. Shelley.
Shelley, aye.
Meyer, aye.
Phelps, aye.
Braswell, aye.
Twigg, aye.
Blaine, aye.
Grant, aye. Items from closed meeting, Dr. Martin.
Motion is that the school board accepts the recommendation of the superintendent for personnel assignments, appointments, transfers, resignations, and retirements as presented in closed meeting and permitted by Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Shelley.
Second.
Second by Dr. Meyer. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. That brings us to item 5.0, and we are now in recess. Second. Motion by Ms. Shelley. Second by Mrs. Phelps to return to open session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody here this evening and thank Deputy Paget for attending. Dr. Meyer, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Shelley.
Thank you. It is with much sadness that I ask for you to join me in a moment of silence for Brock Road Elementary School, second grader Leanna Martin. She lost her battle to cancer and passed away peacefully on November 10th. She will be greatly missed, and our thoughts are with her and her family in this time of sorrow. Thank you.
Brings us to item seven. There is no public hearing this evening. On to item eight, the consent agenda. Dr. Martin.
On the consent agenda this evening of the minutes of the October 8th, 2018 regular meeting, donations which are usual and customary, and change orders number one, two, and three for the Cortland High School renovation project. Staff ask that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I would move the recommended action.
Motion by Mr. Blaine. Second by Dr. Meyer. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero to approve the consent agenda as presented. Informational items, 9.01 Head Start Items Discipline Report for September, and items for the December 10th Board Meeting were all included in the agenda as distributed. Brings us to item 10 Instructional Highlight. 10.01 Performing Arts Highlight, the Choral Ensemble from Thornburg Middle School, Carol Flannard.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. Bela Canto is a small ensemble of seventh and eighth grade ladies from Thornburg Middle School under the direction of Erica Foreman. This group is a group of extracurricular ensemble that rehearses for 90 minutes weekly and requires members to work independently to prepare music for rehearsal. The ensemble consistently receives superior ratings at the state choral assessment in March every year and is often invited to perform at community events. In addition to their performance tonight, these ladies were part of Thornburg's annual Veterans Day Ceremony on November 9th and will be performing in the Thornburg Chorus Winter Concert on November 29th at 7:00 PM at Massi Ponnix High School if you're able to join them, and also at the Spotsylvania Courthouse Christmas Luminary Celebration on Sunday, December 2nd. This evening, Bela Canto will be performing two selections for us. Song of the Unsung Hero, words by Pamela Martin and music by Joseph Martin, performed in honor of our veterans, and Grow Little Tree by Andrea Ramsey. Bela Canto.
Mrs. Flannard, would you care to share with us 10.02?
Yes, ma'am. In alignment with the tenets of a profile of a Virginia graduate, the students from Parkside Elementary are excited to share their adventures with STEM. With support from their instructional technology resource teacher, Janine Zakary, teachers and students in second and fifth grade have collaborated to infuse STEM in all core curriculum areas. Tonight, Mr. Tom Eichenberg, Parkside Principal, and the Parkside Eagles are here to lead the board in a STEM challenge, and that challenge is called Saving Fred.
Good evening, school board members. Dr. Hill, Dr. Martin, and Cabinet. As Mrs. Flannard shared just a moment ago, a few of our Parkside students will be sharing a STEM activity with each of you, and I'm pleased to first introduce one of our awesome fifth graders, Marvin Crenshaw. Up to the mic.
What you have in front of you is tonight's STEM challenge, Saving Fred. Fred needs your help. His boat has flipped over, and he needs help putting on his life preserver. Here's the catch: you may not touch Fred, the life preserver, or the boat with your hands. You may only use the four paper clips in your kit. The directions are provided, and you have student helpers to work with. Good luck.
Our classes are student-centered. We are in charge of our learning. Our teacher teaches us the content then lets us solve the problem. Our teacher is there when we need her. However, she makes us solve the problem by talking with others in our group, not just going to her for help. We always have a great time when we complete a STEM challenge and remember what we learn.
STEM gives us the chance to work and problem-solve together, create a product or solve a problem, take ownership of our learning, show what we have learned in different ways.
Somebody saved Fred.
We know that you haven't had enough time to save Fred, but thank you so much for working with us. As you can see, these STEM projects are amazingly powerful. It is cross-curricular by nature. We have science, technology, engineering, and math, and the science is in the vocabulary like buoyancy, sink, and float. The technology is in the tools that you get to use, your paper clips. The engineering is in your planning and designing. The math is in your problem-solving. Okay? What will I do when my plan doesn't work? We were also able to connect this activity to language arts. The students were learning about sequence of events, and I had the students sequence their events of how they were able to save Fred, and they completed a flow chart. So thank you guys so much for doing this activity with us. I was able to grade the STEM project in reading, math, science, and writing.
Awesome.
And as you can see, it's fifth through second.
Thank you guys so much.
Super engaging.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Now you have to actually get them in, right? That's the hard part.
Much better.
Thank you guys. You did a great job. Nice job. Awesome job. Awesome. Way to go, buddy. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good job. Awesome job, guys. Thank you.
Good job, guys. How cute are they? Hopefully they hold up. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Thank you. Exciting.
Now that we have all saved Fred, would you care to discuss 11.01 Visual Arts Recognition, Mrs. Flannard?
Thank you. We are celebrating the outstanding student artwork from five of our schools. This month, we are showing artwork from Brock Road Elementary. Art teacher is Rebecca Baring. Courthouse Road Elementary, art teacher is Meredith Stalker. Riverview Elementary, art teacher is Anne Flewes. Chancellor Middle School, art teacher is Shannon McKay, as well as Nye River Middle School, art teacher Pam Allen. These students were recognized and received certificates of appreciation at a reception that was held in their honor prior to the meeting this evening. And if it's okay, we are going to move on to the superintendents' award. The November superintendents' award winner for outstanding visual arts goes to Angela Nguyen. She is an eighth grader at Battlefield Middle School, and her artwork will hang in Dr. Baker's office this month. We would like Angela and her art teacher, Jessica Martinez, to come forward and be recognized for their outstanding accomplishment.
And if we have any of Angela's family or friends that are in the audience, if they could stand to be recognized as well, please?
Thank you. Our final recognition for this evening is Rock Out Knockout Homelessness Awareness Event. Our seventh annual Rock Out Knockout Homelessness Awareness Event was held this past weekend on November 9th and 10th. The purpose of the Rock Out Knockout Homelessness Awareness Event is to bring awareness to the growing number of students who are considered displaced or homeless, and at the same time, accept donations to stock the shelves of our own treasure house. This year, Walmart donated a signed NFL player football for us to use as a fundraiser to support this initiative. Raffle tickets were sold at high school football games, and tonight we're pleased to share that the winner of the drawing is Nikki Beach. Unfortunately, Nikki was unable to be with us this evening, but we would like to thank our business partners Walmart and WBQB for their sponsorship of this year's event, and we appreciate the generosity of our community who year after year donate to this worthwhile cause. And tonight, we would also like to recognize our social workers, Michelle Swisher, Lisa Dolan, as well as the Office of Communications and Community Engagement, and all of the volunteers to help make this event a huge success. We appreciate their dedication to our homeless students and their families, and I do believe, Michelle, you have a quick word that you would like to say?
Please.
I just want to thank everybody that comes out and supports us every year. We think this year has by far been our best year. We raised over $1,600 in cash, $800 in gift cards, and we had lots of student and board members and administrators come out and support us, and we appreciate our community for all of the work that they do for us, because without that, we would not be able to continue to support Treasure House and our students. We supported 151 families between the months of July and September. That's about 50 families a month, which, that's a lot of folks that we're supporting, and we appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle, could I ask, do you have any idea how many homeless children we have now in Spotsylvania?
As of today, we have 362.
Three, six, two? Thank you.
That brings us to item 12.01, Public Comments. Dr. Martin?
The public comments segment of our board meetings is a time to receive recommendations, suggestions, concerns, and comments from the general public. Each speaker is allotted five minutes. We ask that they clearly state the name, address, and/or voting district for the board. A speaker may request additional time from the board should one's five-minute allotment expire. We ask that you keep your comments focused on the issues and that all speakers maintain a level of decorum and mutual respect for one another. Our first speaker is Renee Beverly.
Good evening to the school board, Dr. Baker. First, I would like to thank the veterans and of the armed forces for their service to our country. We sincerely appreciate what you've done and what you will continue to do. Tonight, I come before you as president of the Spotsylvania Education Association. I know you're thinking concerns and/or issues, but not tonight. Tonight, I'm here to talk briefly about the other side of the SCA that gives back. We have always been an organization of giving back to the community. We collect and donate to the Hope House, Thurman-Brisbane Center, Girls and Boys Club of Fredericksburg, Read Across America, which is a Dr. Seuss program, Christmas Tree Wishes from your area schools who ask us to help with their Trees of Hope. Currently, we're collecting hats, scarves, and gloves for children and adults in need. We were proudly and most graciously happy to give $500 to Rover for Startup. We participate in a Christmas parade, which is on December 1st. And if any of you are available and wish to help out by giving out pencils, we'd love to have you there with us. We buy a table to support the Spotsylvania Educational Foundation. And finally, the biggest in my heart is feeding local families for Thanksgiving and Christmas. This year's community outreach chairs are Paulette Heron and Michelle Darby. They've both been working very hard with Lisa Dolan, who has found families for them for us to provide food for. With their hard work, we've secured complete meals for 19 families for Thanksgiving, 10 right now for Christmas, and we may even have more. Included in that number are families from our schools, community, and some employees of our school system. Thank you to Mr. Pete Blake and the Buffalo Soldiers for their huge commitment of support. We all take pride in having big hearts and the desire to give back. The Virginia Education Association monitors all local associations, including the Spotsylvania Education Association. Our projects and our community outreach have always gone above and beyond. With that being said, we are the proud recipients of the silver plaque for all of our hard work. Only three locals in the state of Virginia are recognized. But we don't do it for the recognition. We do it because we really care and we really want people to have things that they may be lacking. We wish everyone here a blessed Thanksgiving. If you're traveling, be safe. Thanks again for your time.
Madam Chair, that's all the speakers that signed up.
Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to address the board that didn't sign up? Ms. Palmer?
Good evening. Kathryn Palmer from the Lee Hill District. So, on the way out the door tonight, I noticed it was raining. Shocking, in Virginia these days, it seems to be raining all the time. So, I ran back inside and I grabbed my umbrella. And I grabbed my favorite umbrella. And my favorite umbrella, which I have in the back, is one that has on each panel printed the words of our First Amendment. The umbrella protects me from the rain, and the First Amendment protects me from government trying to stop me from saying what I feel is my right to say. I appreciate the fact that these meetings and all the other meetings in town have a public comment time, because it is in a way, it's a way to exercise free speech. And I value that perhaps above or equal to anything else about being an American citizen. My comments tonight are specifically from Mr. Twig. Last month, I sat in the audience till the end of the meeting, and at the end of the meeting, I heard you characterize the thoughtful decisions made by your colleagues as cowering. And I wanted to stand up here and show you, I am not cowering. I was on the board when we discussed the kneeling issue. I was at that meeting when citizens came out and shared with us their concerns. I received messages from people who supported the students' right to peaceful protests and from people who were offended by the students exercising that right. I gave that a lot of thought, and I know my colleagues on the board did as well. And for you to say that we cowered in the face of a challenge was quite frankly, I think, an insult to your colleagues. It was an insult to me. It was an insult to everybody who came to that meeting and took their time to share with you and your board how they felt about students kneeling during the anthem. I also think it was an insult to the woman you were attempting to help and show support to, because you took her issue, which, by the way, I don't know her personally, but I, every time she's been up here, I have said to myself, "That's phenomenal. The way she's doing this is just wonderful." You took her issue and you used it as an opportunity to take a jab at people who disagree with you, who simply have a different opinion. And I just wanted to say publicly, because you chose to do it publicly, that I think it's wrong that you did that. And I'll be here till the end of the meeting, and I look forward to hearing an apology. Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to address the board that did not have a chance to sign up? Seeing none, that will close our public comment time and bring us to item 13.01, Board Committee Reports. Ms. Shelley?
I have none.
Dr. Martin?
None this evening, thank you.
Ms. Phelps?
No, I don't have anything. Oh, actually, I do. I, I sat in for Kirk Twig at the Food Service Task Force meeting, and it was on October 11th. And the presentation was made by SEDSCO representatives. And they talked about the food carts. They're considered a positive attribute for our students. Concerns were raised by a Food Service Task Force member who requested that the committee facilitator explain investigations that were filed with the Virginia Department of Education, referencing the request for a proposal process and monetary awards given the division high schools. The, explained by the facilitator, the complaint was unfounded by the VDOE. The task force members requested to be provided with legal service fees that were incurred by the school division. It was suggested by a task force member to contact the Freelance Star, which I would totally support and welcome. And my final thoughts are on that is that the supposed complaints were unfounded by the Virginia Department of Education. So, I don't know what that was all about. But anyway, that's what they discussed in that meeting. And also, the solicitation for the community to come out and participate in the Food Service Task Force. The only way that they know how great they're doing or how not so great they're doing is if the community stakeholders come out and share. So, and that was pretty much it. That's it. Thanks.
Mr. Braswell, any board committee reports?
I have a couple of things to comment on. First of all, the governor's school had a meeting, the Advisory Board. And I'm very happy to say that we, I think we announced our last meeting or two meetings ago about our new director, Jennifer Gregsby. And she seems to be doing an outstanding job. And I think all of us on the board have been very pleased with her accomplishments. Secondly, the Spotsylvania Center for Technology and Center is excelled in the state fair competition. Some of you may have read the article in the paper on, over the weekend, on the 11th, in fact, it was on yesterday. The Spotsylvania Career and Technical Center would like to congratulate all of the students who competed at the state fair in October. Students at the SCTC were responsible for eight first places and seven top-three finishers. The Spotsylvania Center and Technical Center is home for high school students from Riverbend, Massaponix, Spotsylvania, Cortland, Chancellor High Schools. SCTC is very proud of the great work its students are doing. And I just emphasize this, because the latest I've seen is that in Virginia, we have about 80,000 jobs going hunting right now, and they don't have anybody to fill them. And the jobs have opening salaries in the $70,000, $80,000 range, mostly in the cyber area. And our Career and Technical Center is gearing up, and this is true not only in Spotsylvania, but all over, all over the country, that we have a need in our society for trained people, and we have the skills and the capabilities to do that. And I hope that as we move into our budget season, that we'll be able to work and address some of those needs. And we have so many of them, it's kind of hard to know what to, what we can spend our money on and what we can't, unfortunately. Thank you.
The Audit and Finance Committee met as scheduled, and we discussed financial position currently and plans for conquering next budget season, including the scheduled dates, and then some goals that we would start to like to focus on. So, as usual and customary for October. That brings us to 13.02, the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Baker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to be very brief, but I do want to just take an opportunity, and I don't want to steal any of the board's thunder for later with your comments, because I'm sure that some of you would like to go into more depth about some of the things that I might share. But it was an honor to be able to represent our school division along with the principal and a teacher from Chancellor Elementary School as they were awarded a National Blue Ribbon Award in Washington, DC. And it was just a pleasure to be with them and then to follow up with the ice cream afternoon with the students and the staff. And I thank the board that was able to be there, as well as other elected officials. But we're extremely proud of that accomplishment for the school. They have every reason to bask in it as a school, as a community. And I, as a superintendent, can again congratulate them publicly. But I also believe that that quality is represented in our schools throughout the school system. And I thank them for their work and achieving it. But I know that they were proud to accept it, not only for their school, but in representing our fine school division.
I think they deserve a standing ovation.
Sure.
Set up a nice school for everybody else, didn't it, Scott?
Yeah, those are the kinds of competitions that I like. I don't know how they're feeling back there, but again, friendly competition. But I also want to thank all of our schools. I was able to get to a couple of our Veterans Day celebrations, and they were just outstanding and inspiring. And it's such an honor to see really whole communities come together to recognize the sacrifices and to give that time and honor to our veterans and many of who represent our students and staff in the school system. So, I want to thank all of the schools, because they all did something special for their community. And we tried to divide and conquer and get out to as many of them as possible. I also want to acknowledge that this past Saturday, it's really been my pleasure over the last few years to have helped to be a part of a more of an organic network of adult volunteers who call themselves the Teen Enrichment Network, which I'm a proud member of, to try to expand our capacity for mentoring, as well as they helped to develop two summits each year that promote and support our teen with various issues and challenges that they face. And this past Saturday at Salem Fields Church, they focused in on a couple of issues, one being cyberbullying, as well as peer pressure, and even conflict management. And I appreciated seeing Mr. Braswell there to provide a lot of really powerful examples and illustrations of how to manage conflict. And then finally, we had a mental health expert who came in to share with parents all of the many challenges with teen depression and suicide prevention. And so, we look forward to continuing that dialogue with the network. And then finally, we have a lot of our teams that have had outstanding seasons, and some of those seasons continue to go on. But I just have to say Chancellor High School, state champions in field hockey. So, congratulate them for that. And they are an accomplished group with a legacy of championships. And so, very proud of them. And again, I have to be careful. When I go to football games where our teams are squared off, I can't wear a hat. I try to stand in the middle. But I am, if it's okay, just going to say, I'm very proud of Spotsylvania High School's football season this year. I believe they have had one of their first winning seasons in about 15 years, and they were able to win, I think, their first playoff game, if the papers are right, since 1999. So, I just want to congratulate them and the entire program, Dr. Hester and Mr. Swink, and their coaches and their players and the community. So, with that, I appreciate everyone for their focused, hard work. The school year is going by fast, but I think that's because of the focus and determination that every employee has in giving their students their best. Thank you.
That brings us to item 14.01, the Second Reading Approval of Avisions of School Board Policies, VSBA July 2018 Policy Updates.
I would like to make a motion to approve the July 2018 policy updates.
I will second that.
Motion by Ms. Shelley to approve the updates proposed, second by Mr. Blain. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0 to approve the policy updates from July 2018. Brings us to 14.02, Approval of Award of Student Support Services Transportation Contract. Mrs. Carter and Richardson?
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. Tonight, I'm presenting the contract award recommendation for Student Support Services Transportation. Spotsylvania County Schools has a need to secure private transportation to meet the IEP needs of some students with disabilities that we serve. Factors that contribute to this include the impact of disability of some students for safe transportation within the division, the impact of disability of some students for safe transportation to private day placements, the impact of disability of some students in relation to length of travel, the impact of disability of some students in relation to sensory processing needs, and when some students in Department of Social Services custody are placed outside of the division in foster care, but Spotsylvania County Schools remains responsible to provide special education services. The school division issued an RFP on June 27th, 2018, for Student Support Transportation Services. The procurement was advertised in the Freelance Star newspaper, posted on EVA, the state procurement website, as well as the school division's purchasing website. A pre-proposal conference was held on July 19th, 2018, at 10:00 AM, and two vendors showed up for that. The Evaluation Committee, which consisted of four members- The evaluation committee, which consisted of four members, individually reviewed and scored the four proposals received that were compliant and in response to the RFP. Once the scoring was complete, the scores were sent back to purchasing where final scoring was compiled. The top-scoring offers were identified, and negotiations were conducted with the top-two ranking firms. ATK Transportation and True Heart Transportation were selected as the most qualified offers based on the evaluation factors listed. Therefore, the RFP Evaluation Committee recommends contract awards to both ATK Transportation and True Heart Transportation Corporation. And we're happy to answer any questions if you have at this time.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the student support services transportation contracts.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Shelley, second by Mr. Twig to approve the contract for transportation. Any discussion? Mr. Braswell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two quick questions. The transportation that is being procured, is it something that is outside of the realm of what our Transportation Division has now? Or is it something that's already defined? Or is it something that we ought to consider purchasing in the future? Just share with me on that.
Certainly, Mr. Braswell. Currently, we're serving about six students on private transport, and it is because we've exhausted all efforts on our current transportation services here within Spotsylvania. And it's become, it's really led to unsafe situations that we've had to look at private vendors. I can't really speak to the parameters of what it might look like for us to invest in our own sort of car transport. I do know 12 years ago, when I came to the division, we had cars, and we phased them out. So I don't know if that's something that we should look at again. I don't know what the insurance and liability and licensure and all of that would necessarily be, but we are very pleased that we've been able to find two vendors that provide quality service for our students.
Thank you for that answer. And the other question I wanted to ask that you kind of led into, other than cost, what were the other criteria that were evaluated in determining this recommendation?
Sure. There were functional requirements, which the criteria considered the extent to which the proposed solution satisfied the RFP and FLEET requirements. That was 30 points. Implementation services was 15 points. Experience and qualifications of the offer was 25 points. Price proposal was 25 points, and then the quality of the proposal itself was five points.
Thank you. So not only did you develop other course of action besides cost, they were weighed, and that came up with this solution?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Twig?
How many of those students leave the county? Details not required. And the amount again, please? For the RFP, what was accepted?
Well, we have estimated costs of, I believe it's going to be around $157,000 a year.
Check, thanks.
We're currently transporting six students, two of which are in the division. The remaining four are transported outside of the division to private day schools.
Check, thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the contract for student support services transportation?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you, Mrs. Richardson. And I think Ms. Carter is staying there for item 14.03, approval of revisions to regulations DJC-R3, P-cards for schools and departments. LaShawn Gaines is joining Ms. Carter for this.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, school board members, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. On this evening, staff is excited to bring to you initiative that's going to help us greatly. As you are aware, the school's P-card policy was adopted by the school board back in 2007. In an effort to become more efficient, the finance staff has recognized additional functionality of the P-card program and is making a recommendation tonight. The recommendation is to add travel accommodations. With the addition of the travel commodities within the program, this will allow us to become more efficient. It would also bring more monies into the school division, the possibility of reducing current expenses. It would allow the finance department to become more efficient. And most of all, it would allow our teachers to avoid using their personal funds for travel expenses and waiting three months or two weeks to be reimbursed. So at this time, staff is recommending approval to this particular regulation.
So move, Madam Chair. Second.
Motion by Dr. Meyer and a second by Mr. Braswell to approve the budget amendment number, or sorry, approve the revisions to regulations DJC-R3. Any discussion? Ms. Phelps?
Thank you so much, LaShawn, for responding to my questions that I had earlier. It explained a lot, other than taking up time here.
Ms. Phelps, could you speak a little?
Other than, let me move this.
Thank you very much.
Is that better? All right. So I appreciate you answering the questions that I had. It clarified a lot of my concerns that I had. I do have another question. Is the P-card, which I didn't ask you, is that compatible with the MUNIS?
I'm going to say yes, because many of the school divisions that use MUNIS, they also have the Bank of America P-card, and it does allow you to upload the bank statement into MUNIS. So yes, ma'am.
Okay. And so the travel would be, I'm just a little cautioned for the consideration of, like, flying people across the United States for conferences and such using the P-card. But in retrospect, I'm going to support this in a spirited vote, but thank you for your help.
Thank you. Dr. Meyer?
Just a point of question. Travel is pre-approved, so if there is a concern about someone taking an international trip, like I did, and charging it to a P-card, that would never be able to happen without prior approval of the immediate supervisor, you know, and others entailed.
That's correct.
We're not changing by adopting a P-card process. We're expanding the service, but we're not taking away any of the parameters of accountability that already occur for the use of travel.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any more questions? All those in favor of approving revisions to regulations DJC-R3?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you, Mrs. Gaines and Ms. Carter. On to 14.04, approval of budget amendment number six, categorical budget amendments between the instruction budget category and the technology budget category for student instructional purchases. Mrs. Gaines?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. And looking at budget amendment number six, in order for us to comply with VDOE, on tonight, staff is requesting two items. Number one, to move $21,305 from instruction into technology. And then the recommendation, excuse me, is to move $496 from instruction into technology. So when you look here, you basically have the net impact of zero.
So move, Madam Chair.
Motion by Dr. Meyer, second by Ms. Shelley to approve budget amendment number six. Any discussion? Ms. Shelley?
Ms. Gaines, this may be a very silly question, but we have a decrease and an increase to instruction. Why didn't we just, like, that $495, take it out of the other and just do it, a one, a transfer of less than a $500 difference?
Because they're different account numbers.
That was my answer. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving budget amendment number six?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Mrs. Gaines, would you like to share with us 14.05, approval of date for the school board and board supervisors to receive the FY '18 CAFER audit results?
I'll move the recommended action.
Thank you. So we're recommending tonight that we have a joint work session with the board of supervisors.
On November 26?
27th.
At 6:00 PM.
Has it been moved in seconds?
Mr. Blaine moved. We need a second. Second by Mrs. Phelps. Any discussion? Mr. Braswell?
Okay, I just want to make sure, I'm understanding this right, in 1405, we're saying that the meeting is going to be on the 27th of November. Is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
And we're changing our meeting. Okay, so that's, I jumped ahead?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, okay. So we're just dealing with the meeting on the 27th?
Correct.
Gotcha.
Any more questions? All those in favor of approving our official audit results meeting joint with the board of supervisors on September 27 at 6:00 PM?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Now we are to 14.06, approval of calendar, oh, sorry. Yes, 14.06, approval of calendar of FY '20 budget dates.
Okay. So in looking at FY '20-20, we're in the process of preparing the budget. So we do have some dates for you to review. Number one, what you see here, Dr. Baker will present his budget on January 28. You would then have a budget work session on January the 30th. Then you would have another budget work session and a public hearing on February the 4th. And then the board, you would actually approve your budget on February the 11th. The county administrator, he would present his budget on February the 12th. Then there will be a presentation by the school board to the board of supervisors that would occur on February 26. Then you would have your normal joint budget work session with the board of supervisors on March the 12th. Then they would have their normal public hearing in Massaponix that would occur on March 26. And then you would finally adopt your budget on April the 15th, in time for us to issue So at this time, staff is recommending that you approve the FY '20-20 budget dates as presented.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Twig to approve the 20-20 budget dates as presented, second by Mrs. Phelps. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0 to approve the budget dates as presented. Brings us, Mrs. Gaines, you're just there for a while this evening, to 14.07, approving of moving the FY '20-20 pre-budget season work session to November 26.
And if I may, Ms. Gaines has, you know, put together the, we're just, she's going to ask for you to, you know, honor the request or to approve this request that's coming from staff. But I want to make sure that the board has some additional context, because I requested that we put this on the agenda, because I would like staff and myself to have some additional time to prepare for the pre-budget work session. And one of the reasons is, is we're looking at our capital improvement plan in particular and looking at some projections, we are needing a little bit of additional time to make some recommendations and being ready for that meeting. We're also going to add to that agenda a discussion for the board on legislative priorities prior to the legislative reception. And with that, I would like my staff to have a little bit of additional time. I've also learned, following our, putting this on the agenda, that at least one of our board members may now have a conflict and not be able to make it. And given the different things that we have on here that I think are very important, I want to make sure that we have the entire board, if possible. I do realize that it's asking the board to do back-to-back nights, but we will be very prepared for that Monday and be as efficient as possible. And we are not necessarily expecting the next night to be a long meeting, as it's primarily the CAFER audit and perhaps a brief discussion on OPEB.
Right. And it's also going to be a very important meeting with the County Finance Committee on November the 20th. Based on some information that may come out of that meeting, that's going to help us better prepare for November the 26th.
And if I may, just to clarify, it's an evening session, 6 o'clock-ish. Thank you.
6:30.
Yes.
Make a motion.
We haven't had a motion yet. You can't ask a question.
I will make a motion to move the pre-budget work session to November 26.
Motion by Ms. Shelley, second by Dr. Meyer, to move the pre-budget work session to November 26 at a certain time?
6:30.
Oh, we need to clarify in the motion, to 6:30 PM.
At 6:30 PM.
Any discussion? All those in favor of having the pre-budget work session November 26 at 6:30 PM?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gaines. 14.08, approval of proposed legislative position amendments for the 2018 delegate assembly.
I would like to make a motion to approve the proposed legislative position amendments for the 2018 delegate assembly.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Shelley to approve the amendment, second by Mr. Braswell. Any discussion?
Ms. Grant, I just thought we should, I'm just, I will be during the delegate assembly in your absence. So I just want to make the board aware of that.
Yes.
So this is our authorization to you to represent us?
Yep.
Can I ask a question? In the documents that were provided, I asked, I sent Dr. Martin an email about the, about the representatives from Spotsy School Board. I think it had Mr. Braswell on it. And so I just want to make clarification. I didn't get a response on it, so I'm just trying to make clarification. Did you handle that, or is that what we're discussing?
No, that's, for some reason, that was not updated in their records. So we've made contact with them, so they, they'll know the representatives. And typically, if it's-
There's always the chair and vice chair.
If it's not been updated, they'll, it'll default to the chair and vice chair. But it was, it was just a clerk error.
Oh, okay. Because the, the-
Yeah.
The documents that I researched and was, were looking at-
Correct.
That were sent to me, it had Mr. Braswell. That's why I was just clarifying. I know how the process works. I'm just making sure for my, so I can write it down for my records. Thank you.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. That brings us to board member comments. Mr. Blaine, would you like to start us off this evening?
I think I've made enough for the-
Mr. Twig?
Yes. Directed toward the budget review or pre-budget review, I'd like for us to, if possible, just review what we can do to assist our music program, much like we did our athletes and sports over the last several years. And if we could just notate that there is some help to be had there as far as support, financial support correlating with the cost of doing business. A couple of their representatives came and spoke one or two meetings ago, brought up some valid points. And if we could just, you know, give that due consideration over the ensuing months. Just put that out there for administration, and we'll talk offline and push this thing forward and just see what we can do to help that situation. Thank you.
Mr. Braswell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I'd like to caveat what Mr. Twig mentioned about our band parents getting a little bit of support in the budget. I know there's great transportation costs that they incur and other costs that they incur as a result of participating in band and those type of extracurricular activities. My fear is that the cost could be prohibitive towards all students having the opportunity to engage in a very worthwhile extracurricular activity at school. And so as we look at the budget next year, I would like for us to try to help them in some ways mitigate some of the costs that is incurred in that activity. I also like to invoke all the board members on the 5th of- I also like to invoke all the board members on the fifth of December. Should be here in the conference room. We are having our thirteenth annual banquet to celebrate all the schools that had the most participants at the race. And as you're aware, each division, high school, middle school, and elementary school will be receiving a check. For first place, a thousand dollars, second place, five hundred dollars, and third place, two hundred and fifty dollars. And we're really excited to have partnership with Pratt Medical Center so that they would continuously partner with us to not only bring about awareness of a very important issue in violence, in teen violence, and ways to mitigate and manage the conflict. But we're very appreciative of the fact that we have a lot of schools that are eagerly promoting the message to their students. And for that, we're thankful. With that being said, that's all of my comments.
Mrs. Phelps?
Okay. I just wanted to, today is celebration of Veterans Day. And I just wanted to share that I am honored to be a wife of a veteran, a sister of a veteran, a granddaughter of a veteran, a niece of a veteran, great-granddaughter of a veteran. And it takes courage and soul to answer the call of duty to defend honor of our country. And I just wanted to thank all the veterans who willingly signed on to answer the call of duty and to the men and women who are presently serving on that call of duty. A huge thank you to the veterans who are here in spirit today. To the family and friends of the veterans who often take the heavy load at home, I just wanted to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. And not just today, but every day to thank a veteran. And I'm very grateful for their service. I also wanted to thank the Spotsylvania High School Band Parents for bringing their water issue to the school board's attention. Pleased to inform the Spotsy High community members that Virginia Department of Health issued the required construction permit for the Spotsy High water filtration improvements. And I'd like to thank Mr. Uppaco, the Director of Operations for the school, the Spotsy County School Board, the Spotsy County Board of Supervisor David Ross and Mr. Petrovich and the entire staff from Spotsy County Utilities for assisting in moving this water filtration project process forward. And with that, I just wish everybody a great Thanksgiving. And I'm very thankful and blessed. Take care.
Dr. Meyer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And it's good to be back after international travel and spending a week with taking care of the grandkids. It is good to be back. I do also want to wish everyone happy Thanksgiving and safe travels. And on concerning budget deliberations or items, I had brought up at a prior meeting to take a look at how we are or how we need to continue to adjust our stipends for our coaches and not just athletic, but all coaches and academics. And if we were looking at something that would be a percent of the base salary versus a flat fee, which over the years has just eroded because of inflation. And if we had some kind of a growth factor, inflation factor in there by a percent, then we'd be able to accompany whatever we do to the base salary would then adjust accordingly. And that would help the music programs, band, the athletics, all those that are on stipends for extra duties. And I think if we can afford to do that or phase in, go a phase-in approach, I think we should take a look at that as a way to address the need for our teachers and others who spend umpteen hours on extra duties. Thank you.
Ms. Shelley?
Thank you. Well, first I want to just thank all of our, the music, the, our performers from Thornburg for being here for Veterans Day, singing that beautiful song. Once again, it's just, it's our veterans. And we have the freedoms that we have because of those who served. So thank you to the veterans. I know that many, I think all of our schools had some type of celebration for Veterans Day. So I just applaud our schools for reaching out to our community for Veterans Day. I want to thank Mr. Twig and Mr. Braswell for bringing up the, our music departments. I think the latter, the last two or three meetings, I have brought up band and fine arts and all of our music. So I thank you for reiterating that we need to support our students in the fine arts because it's, it's important because that is something that, that, it's instructional. It's one hundred percent instructional. So I'm glad that we are having that conversation. And then speaking of budget, because that would be a budget item as well, I was going to save this for new business, but since budget has come up a couple of times, I had mentioned to Dr. Baker about sign language. And I know it would take staff, and then we'd have to, of course, research and see if there is a, if sign language is a language we can teach in our schools for credit. But if it is, then that would be awesome if we could offer it in our schools for foreign language credit. Because I know some students that may struggle with grammar with foreign languages, but sign language does not have that specifics. So I think it would be very helpful for many of our students. So if that is a possibility, I would love to at least see us looking into that. I also want to say Happy American Education Week to all of our staff. This is American Education Week. This is when we celebrate all of our schools. So, and it's everybody, everybody that is part of our schools. So thank you all for everything that you do because without you, we would not have a school system. So thank you so much. Congratulations to, I was able to be a chancellor for, when their field hockey team came home from their state championship the other night. And wow, the energy and the excitement was wonderful. So congratulations to them. I'm a field hockey mom, so it means a lot to me, too. And then Chancellor Elementary, watched the video, watched you guys getting the award. That was great. And you heard us talking about the delegate assembly. So this, starting Wednesday, we will be at the Virginia School Board Association Conference in Williamsburg. So we'll be learning all sorts of good school board things, things that we can bring back to our division. And it's one of my favorite conferences. And then with that, I just wish everybody a very happy, safe Thanksgiving. If you're traveling, be safe and be blessed. Thank you.
Mr. Blaine?
I'd like to reinforce the comments that have been made about the music program. These are skills that our students will carry into adulthood and use throughout their lifetime and especially in the music area. I think this is a very important aspect. And I'm pleased to see the rest of my board members feel so strongly about it. I would like to make a request, though, to our staff to do some planning and maybe have an opportunity to have our preschool and nursery- I can't think of the word I want to use, but the preschool program that we have, and Dawn is here or was here anyway. I'd like to ask that we have a report on what we really do at the preschool level. I have been amazed at the number of, I think fully half of the elementary principals have told me that fifty percent of their children that enroll for kindergarten have never had a book in their hand or something to that effect. And our parents do not recognize the importance in their home for the first five years of their lives to get them ready for kindergarten. We are kids that, when they have had that experience, or a couple of years behind, my guess would be behind other children coming in. And I, I think it would be helpful if we could have a presentation about that whole area that might be kind of focused on our listening audience to talk about how important reading is to children. I used to be involved in that much more in a professional way. And so I am very susceptible to be influenced about the importance. And we used to say to young mothers, very frankly, if you're home from the hospital with your baby and you didn't start reading yet, you better, you're late. So get going. And I, I think it would be helpful to have an instructional program, essentially coming from our board here for the public to say, folks, this is a really important area. And of course, we have the responsibility of educating our ninth, our high school kids who are tenth, eleventh, twelfth grade, some of whom will be parents in the next couple of years. And if, I would love to see us add instructional up at that level. But we have unfortunately no more time. And every year, there's more things we've got to teach. And I appreciate that. Thank you.
And at first, I'd like to say thank you to all the veterans as well. I have some congratulations. I want to congratulate the Mass Pontius High School girls volleyball team. They had a tough loss, but they had a fantastic season. And congratulations, of course, to Chancellor Field Hockey Team. And, and good luck to Spotsy High and Mass Pontius High Schools. They compete in their football playoffs this week. Ms. Shelley, we'll be attending the SBA delegate assembly in my absence. And I want to announce that we are having my favorite event of the year that we do, December third. We will be hosting the legislative reception for the area's school boards. And we had to wait to find a date and to invite most of the attendees because of all the federal seats that were up for elections. So we had to wait until we had a roster before we could send out those invitations. So, but since we have approved the legislative agenda this evening and we will get some more updates that we will go over on the twenty-sixth, then we will be ready for the reception on the third. So. That will bring us to the end of board member comments. And Dr. Baker has another comment for us.
I just wanted to, especially with the reinforcement of our music programs. And I apologize in advance because if I shared all the many things that I and some of the board and the staff had the pleasure of seeing over the last month, it would take a long time. And I don't want to take that time. But I did, since we're giving shout-outs to our athletics over their accomplishments, I had the pleasure, and I believe Ms. Shelley was there as well. And if anyone else was there, I apologize if I didn't see you. But Spotsylvania High School, back on the day before Election Day, November fifth, all of our high school bands participated in a showcase. And they are just outstanding. All of the programs did an incredible job with their, their shows this year. I think the majority of them received superior ratings at assessment. And we have a lot to be proud of. And I understand the board's desire to help that program as well as our other arts programs. I'll just close, maybe to provide a little levity. When I went to DC with the Chancellor Elementary School, there is one art form that I am very supportive of, but not very good at. And it is dancing. And a big part of receiving your award, and in DC, they played music the entire time. And the representative from the, you know, the Federal Department of Education and the Blue Ribbon, she was, she danced for almost three hours. I was told by my wife not to dance. And I want to assure the board that I did not dance because I wanted to represent you well. And Sean Hudson can assure you, I walked up straight. I made no moves because I wanted to represent this school division honorably. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Baker, for not embarrassing the school division. That brings us to item sixteen point zero one. Do we have any unfinished business? Seeing none, that brings us to item sixteen point zero two. Does anybody have any new business? Mr. Braswell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a conversation with a parent and I engaged Mr. Wolf in this particular issue. And it looks like because of the way we have our policy, there are a lot of sports that are not offered at the middle school level that players or athletes, if they were given the opportunity to participate in JV, would be able to compete at the JV level. Obviously, there are some sports that it would make sense for, like field hockey for girls and baseball for boys. Being that we don't have the facilities to do middle school sports and of baseball, excuse me, and middle school field hockey, to allow qualified middle school students that have the athletic ability to participate in JV, to give them the opportunity to do that. Right now, our current policy doesn't allow for that. I find that, you know, that, that's unfortunate because there's a lot of players that could benefit. It's purely based off of ability. It's not an entitlement. So the student would have to go up and compete and make the team and then adhere to all the rules that, that high school team mandates. But I would like for our board to receive a report on the feasibility of that. And if that was something that we could begin or institute by the next school year. So I'd just like to see if that's feasible and hear of any other advantages, but also the disadvantages so that we can, you know, possibly implement some middle school expansion if it's not by sport, by allowing students to be able to participate in a JV level.
Ms. Shelley?
I want to say thank you to Mr. Braswell because my first year on the school board, I brought up that same exact thing, was bringing in, allowing our eighth graders to play JV and at their, where they would go to high school. So bringing it back up, there may be some new data that might be helpful because they brought it, they did bring it to us, and it was not feasible at that time. But maybe there is something new that I would love to hear about that because that was something mainly field hockey. We're talking the sports we didn't have in middle school, field hockey, baseball, and then also cross-country. Or now, because we didn't have winter track at that point, we brought back winter track. And so that would be an addition, too. So thank you, Mr. Braswell.
Any other new business? Mrs. Phelps?
I'd like to, I'm going to go on a limb here, but I've had it in my notes for the past six months to bring up. And now that we're going into budget season and my peers are bringing their interest up. It was something that I was wondering if the staff could look into a firefighter's curriculum. I do know firsthand, I have firsthand experience with how important they are and how, just like teachers, they're hard to come by. So I just thought maybe it would be something to kind of start exploring, just to see if the upper tenth, eleventh graders would be interested in, you know, something that's geared towards firefighter curriculum, becoming one, working within the county. I don't know. I just figured I would bring that up. And maybe you can look at it. Thank you.
It was a curriculum that we offered.
And I, I thought at one time that Curriintech did have a program geared for juniors and seniors in conjunction with the current-
That is correct. It was offered.
Whether it still is, I'm not sure. But that, Ms. Phelps' point is well taken.
Any other new business? Any motion to adjourn?
Both.
All those in favor? We adjourned.